...of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fatacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, I know we have many guests in the chamber this evening, and I think they're here for two of our spotlights on excellence, and I would recognize the superintendent to explain to us what all our guests are here for.
Um, yes, um, thank you, Mayor Martin. The, um, uh, this summer, the, uh, school department ran, uh, an exciting, uh, summer mathematics program, uh, to parallel our summer reading program, and I'd like Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, who oversaw, uh, this effort to, uh, explain, explain tonight's event.
Good evening, everybody. Today, we are welcoming thirty-five youngsters for winning actually an award for completing the math packets that were sent home at every grade level in our school system. Uh, we have thirty-five participants this evening, and I'd like to thank the math resource teachers, teachers at the buildings, parents, and of course, our children for making the effort to complete these packets and to return them to our schools. Um, our work together collaboratively only makes for a better school system, and so we thank you all for being here, and we congratulate you and your children. So, um, without further ado, we are going to ask the children to come forward. We're going to recognize each one of the children, and, um, out in the hall, we've been talking all about shaking the mayor's hand, which happens to be the highlight of the evening. So, what we will do is we're going to call the children one by one, so they can come up and meet Mayor Martin and, um, or receive their prize, which is a calculator for each student.
All right. I just hope no one's disappointed.
Okay, from the Bailey School, we have Tyler Carpenter. And Emily Resendez. From the Bartlett School, Alexander Biso. From, and Jessica Shaw. From the Greenhouse School, Matthew Markot. And Emily Genowitz. From the Lincoln School, we have Naisha Mambishora. And Justin Savuth. Justin's not here. I'm sorry. This is from the Gavinou School, Billy Crusoe. And Jan V. Patel. From the Moody School. Ethan. Ethan Sorn. And Anderson De Silva Pontes. From the Maury School. David Savoy. We also have Jaden Sanchez, who's not with us tonight. From the Merklin School. Linda Bonnie. And Carolyn Caniones. Not here this evening. From the Pachacabal Memorial School, Ellie McMenamin. Ruby Lee Nadop. And Tonya Nanda. From the Pine Art School, we have Thomas Radzik. And Patrick Kander. From the Riley School, we have John Del Carillo. Shane Duarte. Is not here tonight, but David Nguyen is. From the Rogers School, Brenda Noon. And Abu Jola. From the Shaughnessy School. Cameron Horn. And Apsanish Andrea Yen. From the Sullivan School, Elizabeth Donahue. And Colleen Niles. From the Barnum School. Era Patel had an award, he's not with us, and here's Andre Regal. From the Wang School, we would have Radha Patel and Norade Mujhuddin, who aren't with us, but we here have Washington School student Anthony Cody. We have the prize pool, if you'll wait one second. Thank you to all parents who came, and for all of you for being here. We'll make sure the other students get their prizes. We also would like to recognize the school that had the most participants in the, the actual, uh, summer math program. So that would be the Riley School, and I'd like to introduce Principal Linda McGlaughlin and Math Resource Teacher Barbara Smith. They had forty-nine students participate, and they win a classroom set of calculators for their building.
Okay, does that conclude that presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you all, uh, students for coming. Congratulations, and congratulations on a job well done this summer. And we have a, uh, second, uh, spotlight on excellence, uh, to present this evening. Madam Superintendent?
Um, yes, uh, mathematics is, uh, not our only focus, uh, and, um, this second spotlight on excellence is, uh, uh, featuring, um, Wang School Science Lab Teacher Martha Cohn. Martha has been, uh, named by the Massachusetts Audubon Society as one of the five 2007 Conservation Teachers of the Year. Um, Ms. Cohn's work, um, has focused on developing, um, the Mass Audubons Drummond Farm in Lincoln, Mass, the River Schools Initiative. And Marty has had a major role in developing a, a really powerful curriculum that introduces middle school students, uh, to the Merrimack River's tributaries, flora, fauna, and related environmental issues, which are all connected and tied directly to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So it's a wonderful way of introducing youngsters to the world around them, uh, enabling them to see the world in a new way, uh, and tying it all very directly and, and tightly to, uh, the curric- the science curriculum standards in Massachusetts. Marty is a, uh, is a, uh, very valuable, valued member of our, of our staff. Um, she serves on the District Science Curriculum Committee. She has served on that committee for eleven years. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, later in, uh, the meeting, there, there's a report on the efforts we've, uh, undertaken to, uh, continue to upgrade our science curriculum, and Marty Cohn has been at the front and center of that work. Uh, so we're very fortunate for her efforts. She also currently serves, uh, as lia- as liaison to the Massachusetts Department of Education Science Initiative Study Group. Um, she does, uh, Marty Cohn does a truly excellent job, and it is wonderful to have someone who pours her heart and soul into high-quality teaching for her kids every day, and then somehow finds a little more energy, uh, for really strong, uh, leadership of her colleagues in the collaborative effort to, uh, continue to improve the science curriculum. So we want to congratulate Marty for this honor from the Mass Audubon Society, but also thank you for your, uh, work over these years, uh, on behalf of our kids and our faculty. Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing me this evening, and I want to thank Mass Audubon for honoring me as well and sending in my nomination, and mostly really for their outreach program that brings their volunteers into the classroom to teach our students about watersheds and pollution and recycling, but I get the nice honor of working at the Wang School, which is in walking distance to the river, so I'm able to take the students down where they do water quality testing right on the riverbank. They look at the animals in and out of the water, so it's a nice connection to the content in the classroom. So, thank you for honoring me for something I enjoy doing, and thank you to Mass Audubon for it as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Cohn, thank you for, uh, the work you've done, and, uh, really to, uh, we, not only are we proud of you, but it makes, I think, all of the state look, uh, highly on this Lowell school system. And so, to you and your colleagues at the Wang, uh, sincerest thanks and congratulations. Mr. McHugh.
Yes, I'd just like to personally, uh, thank Marty, uh, having, uh, known her for a number of years, uh, being a neighbor. Uh, she's always been outdoors, working in the yard, and I can, I remember with the flowers and everything else, and even spending time with my children at the time and, uh, showing them the benefits of, you know, uh, conservation and, uh, working outside. So I, I remember reading the article in the paper some time ago about your efforts down over at the Wang, and I applaud them, and it's, uh, it's great to see that all the students can benefit from, uh, her experience and her hard work, and it's always nice to recognize a, a, a hard-working teacher and, and, and get some accolades out of it. So personally, I'd like to thank you for all your efforts and, uh, wish you well as we move forward. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, and I really would just like to add my congratulations to the list. I think that as we look at this kind of an award, it certainly spotlights one of our exceptional teachers in our district who, uh, who we're lucky to have, and I think when you read a little bit and you start seeing the, the scope of the work that Ms. Cohn has been doing, it doesn't simply begin and end at the Wang School. Her impact has spread throughout our district, and I think really even more impressively, as a liaison with the Massachusetts DOE, it really once again highlights the exciting things that are happening in Lowell, the, the sheer, uh, excellence that we expect and are lucky enough to get from our, our great teaching staff, and I think she brings a lot of pride to the Wang School and to Lowell District in general, and I thank you.
Okay, any, uh, anything further? Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Cohn, and for your colleagues for coming down this evening. We'll now move on to, uh, the more mundane items on the agenda. Which, uh, approval of the minutes of, um, actually, I, I tell people they're welcome to stay as long as they would like, but we certainly won't be offended if you need to leave. Uh, so we have, uh, next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the October third, 2007 meeting. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Fatacante. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, there are several items this evening. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, recommending, uh, two contracts. The first with this ASAP Fire and Safety Corporation, uh, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars to provide service, maintenance, and replacement for over five-hundred fire extinguishers and hose cabinet services in thirty locations for this school year. Funding provided by the school department's FYO eight operations and maintenance budget. And also the American School at Hartford for the Deaf, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars to provide special education transportation services for a student, student from Lowell who is transported to the American School at Hartford for the Deaf in Connecticut. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Do I have a first and a second?
Uh, motion approved by Ms. Fatacante, second by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, the, uh, contracts are approved. Next, under memorials, we have, uh, two memorials offered by Ms. Fatacante this evening. One for Brendan Sullivan, retired Lowell High School teacher, and one for Lilian Sullivan, um, a member of a, a well-known prominent local family. And also a memorial offered by the committee as a whole for Jay Alperin, the husband of Diane Alperin, Alperin, the Maury School Principal. If we could please rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers in their memory. May they rest in peace. Under the motions this evening, the first motion is offered by Mr. Leahy. Uh, the motion is that the superintendent give an update on the status of the boiler at the Riley School, second by Mr. La- uh, Mr. Leahy, Mr. La- uh, Mr. Leary, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the motion speaks for itself, uh, just like to get an update on the status of the boiler at the Riley. Um, as we know, it's in tough shape, and with the winter, uh, upon us, I was just, um, curious if we could get a report on, uh, I know funding's, uh, falling short this year, but I just want to make sure we're prepared for the winter ahead. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, the boiler here is working, so maybe, maybe we could get some of the excess capacity out there. Any, uh, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. The next motion by Ms. Martin. Uh, the motion is requesting a report from the superintendent describing the problems encountered in implementing the new student lunch program and actions that have been taken thus far to improve implementation at schools across the district, second by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Uh, I had been approached both by a, a couple of staff, uh, in our, particularly in our elementary schools, and also a couple of parents, who had expressed some concern about the way we are implementing our new, uh, lunch options, especially for younger children. Um, I think the timing is certainly a, a concern, that children aren't having enough time, uh, to actually finish their lunch before they, they move on to the next part of their day, and I know that there has been some frustration, just in terms of the logistics, of asking, you know, kindergarten, five-year-old students to decide in the morning what they're going to want for lunch in the afternoon. Um, so I was just curious what the, if this was something, the, the responses I had gotten were in two locales. I didn't know if this was something that was specific to those school sites, and if other schools may have been more successful in implementing this, or just to get a general status report of how it's going across the district and any concerns that we need to be aware of to fix and make sure that this is happening seamlessly as part of our school day.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
If I could just make a comment, um, I happened to be at the Lincoln School last week, and what they do there is they, in the morning, they ask the children what they want, um, and then by lunchtime, they get, you know, one or two percent that may change their mind, but for the most part, it speeds it up, and it, it really helps them calculate what lunch they need. So, um, I know at the Lincoln, that's, that's what they're doing. As far as the Riley goes, my son likes the choice. When he gets up there, boom, he picks it, but, uh, I thought that was a good idea at the Lincoln, so maybe they're doing that at the other schools, I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty.
Uh, yes, uh, I guess my, my question is, I, I think there are other concerns about the lunch program that we could also be looking at in terms of whether our policies are being followed out district-wide regarding throw away, throwing away food or selling excess food back to children, you know, for a ha- for a second piece of pizza or whatever, and I'm wondering if we should refer this to, where does the lunch program go? Is that facilities? The facilities subcommittee, or what is the wish of the body here?
Facilities sound good to me.
To kind of look at, use this motion as an opportunity to, you know, look at how the lunch program is working with the new choices for our elementary kids, and also some of the other features about the lunch program to kind of update us on that. Is, everybody's okay with putting that for facilities?
So the suggestion is the report come back to the facility subcommittee?
So that we could have a comprehensive look at that, okay.
So you want to amend the motion to?
Amend the motion for it to go back to the facility subcommittee?
So moved by Ms. Fatacante, second by Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the amendment is approved, and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved.
As amended.
As amended. The, uh, the next motion is by Mr. Leary. Request the superintendent provide the curriculum Subcommittee Recommendations for Changes of Instruction and Implementation of Health and Physical Education Curriculum, Ki- Grades K through twelve. The recommendation should include suggestions on health and physical education staffing, improved opportunities for health and physical education, staff collaboration, and staffing realignment. If necessary, the primary goal is to ensure each student acquires the skills necessary to attain total fitness and conditioning for a lifetime. Second by Mr. Leahy, Mr. Leary.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think this is a motion, I think is timely, in, in light of looking at the obesity problem you're seeing throughout the nation. This is something I worked on with Brian Martin and Dennis Kreziak at the high school. All by no means is it just for the high school. I think it's a long time in coming. We have a lot of hard-working health and physi- physical education teachers. I think tying into curriculum and using this as a holistic, uh, approach to education will, will only be a benefit, so I, uh, I'm happy to submit this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. McHugh. The superintendent report on the status of textbooks at Lowell High School, second by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. McHugh.
Yes, just briefly, I saw something in the paper last week that was, uh, a parent was, uh, making a comment regarding their student did not have textbooks, and I'd like to get a report on the status, uh, of all textbooks and programs at the high school, uh, and I'd like to have it for the next meeting if all possible, uh, or prior to the next meeting. Uh, what, what are we, we're actually waiting for? I mean, we're getting pretty late in the year to be, uh, having students without textbooks. I'm not sure if this is just, uh, a unique situation, or is this a problem that's ongoing? I know when we talk about this around budget time, uh, to get the textbook purchase made in June, so that they're here in plenty of time for the opening of school, so I'd like to get to the bottom of this as quick as possible and, uh, find out what we're actually waiting for, and hopefully it's only an isolated issue and it's not something that's, uh, larger than what it appears to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty.
Uh, yes, I'd like to offer that the high school subcommittee will be meeting this month. I don't know if the report could be done in time for that, but that might be a good time to discuss it. I think our meeting is on the twenty-ninth of October. Yes.
I don't have a problem with sending it there, uh, which would be great, but I want to make sure all, everyone gets a copy of it.
Oh, of course.
You know, I mean, I'd like the, the report to be sent to all, uh, members of the committee as soon as possible, and if it's available for that meeting, I, I plan on attending that meeting, so I think we could discuss it at that point.
Thank you.
So, the motion to amend to refer the report to the high school subcommittee meeting on October twenty-ninth by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed, the amendment is approved. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Um, I'd also like to make the suggestion that maybe, um, once a year, we get an update. I don't know what, through what, um, subcommittee, but we should, we get a quarterly report of our motions. Maybe we should be getting a yearly update on book purchases, um, and tie it into, uh, class sizes. So, if, I'd leave that up to the committee, if we'd like to make a motion or amend the motion, or where it would go.
That might go to the finance subcommittee curriculum, but I think, I think that obviously, I mean, one simple phone call to the headmaster would have solved this issue. Is, is, is that, was it accurate or was it not accurate? Because sometimes kids, uh, don't always tell their parents, um, why they haven't got a book. Oh, because there aren't enough to go around, and maybe they've left it in school every day. We, so we don't really know. But I think if you look at, I think Mr. Leahy's motion or substitute is a good idea. Let's look at our textbook purchases, and, I mean, we, we know where those purchases are going, and let's look at potential class size, and we'll be able to tell months in advance whether or not we have enough books to go around. So this, this is not an issue next year.
Okay, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, and just to, to follow up on what committee woman Fatacante was saying, I actually talked to the headmaster today, and there was two specific issues. One was regarding psychology, AP Psychology courses. The books just arrived on Friday, and that was an issue regarding some type of miscommunication with the purchaser's office, something that doesn't happen, uh, hopefully often. The other issue was regarding, uh, Spanish II classes, and, and the headmaster was looking into it. Specifically, the headmaster also pointed out that he instructed all the department heads to ensure that all the children had their books. Uh, apparently, one or two teachers made a decision on their own. It's because children drop out of classes or move out of classes, that sometimes they don't give all the books out because they're afraid of getting the book back. And obviously, the headmaster had looked into this, because this is our, actually my second conversation with him regarding it, and he actually made a directive that this is not to happen. We have enough books, ensure that they get to the proper students. So I think it is a timely motion, the amendment's a timely motion as well. I think reviewing it and following up is imperative. Obviously, we need to know if there's a financial issue so we can prepare. I think we did prepare early enough, and I think, uh, we're going in the right direction. I think, unfortunately, there were two specific classes that there weren't books. And that has been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, so, any further discussion on the, uh, original motion? So, uh, as, as amended to refer to the subcommittee? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that motion is approved. Uh, Mr. Leahy, is it, you want to take up that motion? Motion to suspend the rules to consider this, uh, motion by Mr. Leahy, by, the motion to suspend by Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Fatacante. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the rules are suspended, and then on this motion to request, uh, an annual update on, on the status of textbook purchases and that.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Right.
Great. I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Fatacante. All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, uh, the motion is approved. The next motion is by Mr. Leary. Request the superintendent provide the Lowell School Committee Recommendations for New Five-Year Goals for Lowell High School, all middle schools and elementary schools. The years would reflect 2008 through 2012, uh, reaching to the next level beyond Lowell School Committee's 2001 through 2006 goals. Recommendation should include specific target goals at each school level.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Fatacante. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. Uh, this motion really, it's timely. I think our past five-year goals are up. It's time to renew them. I think it's something we need to do as a, a school, uh, public school, every five years. We should also look at them dur- during the year to see if we're meeting them, which we obviously do when we do our evaluations of the superintendent. Um, obviously, what I, what I, when I initially thought of it, I thought of the high school in terms of the Lowell Plan, in terms of the small community grants, that there's a lot of different, um, thoughts, different work, different activities that are being not only funded by thoughts, different work, different activities that are being not only funded by private grants, by private entities like the Lowell Plan, that we need to really start putting these together to put a cohesive, you know, discussion together in terms of where we're going to be in the next five to 10 years. And I think the committee, obviously, from the high school standpoint, is going to want to put their imprint as we are the spokes folks for the people out there. But in tying in the high school, you can't forget the, obviously, the middle schools or the elementary schools. So I think this is timely to go through this, to look at it from 2008 through 2012, and this is really the end of the year of 2007. It's about time. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Under subcommittee, oh, I'm sorry, one more motion by Ms. Martin. The motion is to request the superintendent present to the Personnel Subcommittee a proposed survey instrument to be distributed to all staff of the Lowell Public Schools. The instrument should be designed to encompass the following areas of interest: perceived school safety, adequacy of resources and facilities, general impressions of the quality of professional development offerings, and opportunities for advancement. Additionally, the report should include a suggested timeline for implementation and recommendations on if a web-based application could be utilized to ensure broader participation and more efficient and accurate analysis of results. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I think that really what has prompted this is, we come to our school committee meetings, we're out in the community talking with teachers, and I think many times we're getting very, almost diametrically opposed impressions of what's going on in our district and in our specific classrooms. And I think that really, in order for us to make good decisions, we need to have the most accurate information we can. Over the course of the last few years, certainly, the Personnel Subcommittee has had it as a side letter as part of our negotiations to try and revamp our evaluation process. Part of that, always in my mind, was the idea of ensuring that our evaluations really offered an opportunity for two-way conversation, that it really was a dialogue where you were discussing supervisors, principals, assistant principals, were talking with staff about what they were doing great, about what, you know, improvements needed to be made, and that teachers and frontline staff had the opportunity to have those same conversations with their supervisors, what things were working in their classrooms, and what things they felt needed to be improved. I think over the course of the years, we've made some limited forward motion on revamping our evaluation process and the evaluation instrument. I think it's certainly frustrating, and it's something that we continue to work on, and certainly from the Personnel Subcommittee perspective, it's something I plan to continue to work on. But I think for right now, really looking at a way to be able to elicit factual substantive information from our teaching staff, from our school-based staff, starting with clerks, going, you know, straight through the entire population of individuals who dedicate their time and their professional lives to our district, to get that information in the most direct way. Part of the reason why I had included wanting to at least find out if there is a web-based option, so that information's not traveling through principals, information's not traveling through building reps, information is coming directly from the staff to an anonymous point where we're able to make a very accurate analysis of the information we're given. Perspective versus substance, it's something we discuss over and over again. I think my thought behind this motion really was to be able to implement something that would give us solid, direct information from the individuals who make our district work so that we can have that information to inform us as we make decisions for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to add one thing. One of the things that interests me about this motion is, because it is so inclusive, you notice that one of the areas we'll be asking our staff to comment on is the school safety issue. And I know last year, we implemented a program where we surveyed our students about how they felt about school safety as a baseline of information that then we can move forward as we continue with our safety programs, our discipline policies, our anti-bullying programs at each of our schools. So obviously, the adults in the building, their feelings about the safety at the school is also important for us to establish this baseline data. So I see the benefits, as my colleague mentioned, in the evaluation instrument piece, but I think there are also other areas, and school safety is one that I think we can really gain more information from, that would, this survey would include. And also, the general impression our staff have of our professional development opportunities and the advancement opportunities is also another area I'd be interested in hearing from our staff about. So I think it's an important motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the superintendent. I think it's a great motion too, but I think it's, as an individual pointed out to me a couple of weeks ago, it's really important how we ask these questions. We could really, with an opportunity, we could easily mess it up. I would, I would really hope that you go outside the box. In other words, even go to an independent source, maybe a candidate that's writing a doctoral dissertation, whatever, even outside of Lowell. So everybody has a comfort level. It's important that management has a comfort level. It's important that the staff has a comfort level. Without that, without the correct questions, this could, this opportunity could simply blow up. So I just encourage you to do that outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just have a couple of concerns, and maybe I'm not clear on the motion. It seems like a good motion, but it seems like we should already be doing this in our schools, and I don't understand why we would, shouldn't we already have a dialogue going on between staff and buildings and, you know, the principals, the staff and everything? So, I mean, when I see this, it sounds, you know, it's a good motion, it has good merit to it, but it kind of bothers me that we should already be doing this. We should already have an open dialogue, and people shouldn't be afraid to speak up. I mean, we have enough meetings every year. We have monthly meetings, superintendent meetings, building meetings. I really don't understand why this isn't happening now, so, kind of, it bothers me on that end. But I, you know, let's move ahead with it and go forward, but this is something that we should really already be doing, and we should have a dialogue, and we shouldn't be afraid to speak up in our, in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those, Madam Superintendent.
If I could just comment, I think that there are a couple of, the advantage that moving forward on this would give us is that it would be a very systematic way to collect information and to, and to look at it across the whole system, and I, to committee member Larry's point, I think that there are some actual survey instruments that we can use that would address these questions that have been tested out in other school systems, both in-state and out-of-state, and may actually also give us a baseline to look at our responses against some other school systems, or, you know, urban districts in general, or school systems in general in the state or even in the country. So we may be able to take this motion and also get even more out of it in terms of looking at some comparative data. So I look forward to following up on this motion and getting some systematic data. I think the dialogue is open and productive in our schools, but this gives us a systematic way of collecting information, and I think it's important to identify areas where we need either more dialogue or that we need to make some changes and improvements in. And it will certainly supplement the information that we, that we get, and it will supplement it in a very systematic way.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Next item is subcommittee reports. We have one report this evening from the Curriculum Subcommittee Report of the Meeting of October 17, 2007. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. The Curriculum Subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We really had only one topic of discussion, and that was to review a proposed research study to happen in one of our schools. This is a proposal that was submitted to us by the National Center for Educational Accountability, part of their Just for the Kids research project that's going on, and they had made a request to conduct, conduct their, their research specifically at the J.G. Pine Arts School, one of our K through eight schools here in the city. What's particularly interesting, I think, about this research proposal is that really what they're focusing on is being able to make comparisons between average performance among public schools and those schools that are performing above average, wanting to find out what are the differences? What are those key components of a school community that really allows students to not just perform at what you would expect, but to really outperform their peers in other, in other schools and other districts? I think it's particularly heartening that the Pine has been chosen because it is a school that is outperforming expectations. This is a school in the city of Lowell that, based on its demographics, based on its location, its population, and based most specifically on its test scores, has been determined to be a high-performing school, and perhaps a place where we can really discern some valuable information for improving all our schools here in the District of Lowell, and certainly far beyond that. The study itself is going to be conducted, as I said, by the National Center for Educational Accountability. They're doing these studies, they focused on five states, Massachusetts, obviously, also California, Florida, Michigan, and Texas, so that they're really going to be able to take information that's found in all of these different sites, be able to compile it, and hopefully really be able to glean some valuable insights as to what's happening that is effective for students and particularly for their performance on these key standards, these key standard indicators. The Subcommittee did review the proposal, and a motion was made to recommend its approval for the full, the full committee to review and vote in on. Thank you.
I want to bring in this motion.
Thank you. So is that a motion to approve the study request by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty? Ms. Fatacante.
Your Honor, to the head of the Subcommittee, exactly how is the study going to be conducted?
Well, as the proposal outlines, there's going to be a series of basically web-based surveys that individuals will need to complete. It will include classroom teachers, school administrators, and I believe central administrators. Also included in that is, once they've completed the kind of survey instrument, then there will be individual interviews, and there will be groups of, particularly with the teachers, they'd be bringing teachers together in almost a focus group to be able to discuss what's happening in the school and being able to get that information from them. The final component, which is focused on Algebra I and Pre-Algebra, are, would include classroom observations that would be 25 minutes in length, would be conducted by working with teachers so that they would not be intrusive. We'd employ the same quarry measures that we have in place for all volunteers in our schools, and as we had recently discussed with another proposal at the Varnum School, we'd be sure to send home information to our parents so that they knew that this observation was going to be happening, and they'd be aware of it in time before it actually happened in the classroom.
Ms. Fatacante.
Thank you. And also, through you, Your Honor, to the superintendent, I have yet to receive across my desk the letter that you had sent out to the parents for the last survey, for the last request?
It's not been written yet.
Okay.
And the research has not started.
Okay. So we will receive a copy of that?
If the Subcommittee would like a copy.
Absolutely. I think that was part of our discussion, that we would see what kind of notification you were sending out. Parents may want to opt out for whatever reason. I think we need to, I think we, it's, we should never assume every parent wants their child to be in a class while that's happening. So I think that we need to be very careful. I don't, I don't want some youngster going home and say, "Oh, mommy, daddy, grandma, grandpa, some, guess who was in my class today?" And a parent not having any notice about that, getting a little concerned about it. So I think it's just, it covers you as the head administrator for safety reasons. And I think that, and so for a parent, I think absolutely we need to get some advanced notification out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
I would just say, I think in that same vein, we really should have a standard, you know, communication that goes home, that gives the specifics of whatever research study is going home, and that gives all the disclaimers and all the options that parents have, whether it's to opt in or out or any of that, just so it's a standard form that we rely on all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Could you just repeat the name of the group that's conducting the survey?
I certainly can. There you go.
Okay.
That's what I was just going to say.
Okay. So roll call on the motion to approve of this survey.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Seven ayes, the survey is approved, and is that the, some of the Subcommittee report, then? Okay.
That is the entire Subcommittee report.
So motion to accept the report and place on file by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Subcommittee report is accepted. Under reports from the superintendent, there are several this evening. First, on 2007 MCAS testing results. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. You have in your packets a copy of the 2007 MCAS district overview prepared by Mr. Slickman, our coordinator of research, testing, and assessment, and I thought I would highlight a couple of, a couple of important points from the, from the report. As Mr. Slickman pointed out, that when Acting Education Commissioner Nellhouse released the MCAS results for last spring recently, he, he said that the progress that we saw this year was unprecedented in most grades and serves as a reminder of just what our students can achieve with the right support systems in place. And the results in this report, I think, clearly indicate that Lowell, Lowell accomplished that and more. And I would invite you to look on the second page of the report, which is a new kind of bar chart. We haven't had this one before. What this is designed to show is for each grade level of test, grade level tested, and for the different subjects of math and ELA, it's designed to show the difference between the progress made in Lowell and the progress statewide. So if you look, for example, the top half of the page covers mathematics. So if you look at, for example, grade six math on the left-hand bar chart, the red shows how, the percentage of youngsters, the decrease in the percentage of youngsters earning warning or failing scores in the grade six MCAS score, in MCAS test. The blue bar, which is much shorter, shows what happened statewide. So the state significantly drove down statewide the percentage of kids failing or earning warning scores. That's the blue line. But in Lowell, we almost tripled that rate of decrease. So it's a very, I hope, graphic description of just how much we exceeded the state trends this year. And what has been happening in most prior years is that our trends have paralleled the state trends. So if, if the statewide, we reduced the percentage of kids failing, statewide, if it was a reduction by 3%, Lowell would be similar, 3% at a particular grade level. This year is a really breakthrough year for us, and I think speaks, particularly in mathematics, where the differences are really dramatic, to the, that our math initiative, which our teachers are working so hard to implement and so effectively, is really taking hold. And so, so the, the upper left-hand chart shows a decrease, the decrease in the percentage of kids earning failing or reduce, or warning scores. On the right-hand side is the percent, the increase in the percentage of youngsters who are earning proficient or advanced scores. So we, again, want to exceed the bar, goes in the other direction, because it's increasing the percentage of kids earning proficient or advanced scores. And proficient or advanced, committee members know, requires a 240, not the 220 graduation passing rate, but the 240 rate. So this is, this is really good news for us. And again, I just want to highlight grade six mathematics, where the rate of improvement in Lowell, in that case, is, is more than double the rate of improvement for the state. So it's nearly triple in reducing the failure in warning scores of below 220, and almost doubling the percentage of kids earning proficient or advanced. In English Language Arts, you can see that in almost every grade level, we also exceed the state average rate of improvement. So this is an indicator of our being able to close the gap, moving toward closing the gap between the, between the performance of youngsters in Lowell on average and the youngsters statewide. So this is very good news for us. We'll track this now annually so that we can follow, follow those trends. I also want to comment on the next page, which is just a little bit more detail on I also want to comment on the next page, which is just a little bit more detail on the adequate yearly progress, information that the committee has seen identifying the status for each of our schools and the very large number of schools who made their very challenging federal target on adequate yearly progress. As Mr. Slickman points out here, in 2006, only six of our schools were able to make their adequate yearly progress target in math and six in ELA in, in the aggregate for the average score. This year, in math, it went up from six to 17 and that's meeting a higher standard because that target gets higher each year. And in ELA, to 19 of our 23 schools. So the strong majority of our schools made, made their, their target for MCAS scores in the aggregate and a significant number of schools made their targets for every subgroup. Notably, as I reported last week, the Sullivan, at last meeting, the Sullivan Middle School really blew the numbers off the charts, particularly in mathematics and really with, with another, another strong performance, they will be clearly moved off, moved into the good standing status. So I want to comment on the Sullivan, the Bailey, the Butler, the McAuliffe, the Moody, the Pine Arts, the Shaughnessy, and the Varnum, all of whom made their AYP target for every subgroup, as well as in the aggregate in math. And then the Bailey, Bartlett, Daley, Greenall, Lincoln, McAuliffe, Moody, Potuckeville, and Shaughnessy, which made their target for subgroups and in the aggregate for English Language Arts. So that's a good news for our schools, movement in the, definitely in the right direction. The third page of the report is a new piece of information for Committee members and this looks at the two-year trends in test takers. Because what is significant, particularly significant in Lowell, is, is the change in our testing population as the number of tests have increased. So since 2005, the state has required MCAS tests of more grades. So whereas in 2005, you can see the, the graphic there that shows in English Language Arts, the number 4,282, those are the number of MCAS test takers in Lowell in 2005. Two years later, because of the added tests, we're testing 7,319 youngsters, an increase of 71% of our youngsters taking the MCAS tests. So roughly going from 4,300 to 7,300 for both math and English Language Arts. That addition of grade levels between grades three and eight has had a very interesting result on who's taking the test. And if you go down to the middle block, this is the percentage of youngsters who are test takers who are limited English proficient. Youngsters who are not native speakers of English and are still not, not yet fluent in the English language, have still not been yet declared formerly LEP. And so in 2005, 23% of our test takers, less than one in four, I'm sorry, yes, less than one in four, was, was a youngster who was not yet fluent in English and was taking the test in English. Two years later, 38% of our students taking the MCAS test were not yet fluent in English, taking the test in English. So it's, so to see the score improvements that we've seen at the same time as our population of test takers has, includes a much higher percentage of youngsters who are limited English proficient is really, points to the fact that our teachers are really reaching those students very, very effectively and points to the fact that the improvement's been even more dramatic. Similarly, by expanding the, the, the test takers, we've gone from 67% of our youngsters taking the test, eligible for free and reduced lunch, which is an indicator of poverty, up to 76%. So again, an increase in the, the group of youngsters who typically don't do as well on MCAS as other youngsters. So in spite of that, we've seen some significant increases. And similarly, in the bottom two graphs on that same page, look at the issue of, really of absence, if you will. We now, in the, in the 2007 testing, we had 99% of our students who were eligible to take the test took it. Two years earlier, it was 96%. That difference is primarily that youngsters who may not have been in school to take the test now are taking the test. So this is an indicator, and I know Committee members have been very interested in the whole attendance issue, this means youngsters who are not, some of our poorer attending students are now in the pool of test takers between 2005 and 2007. So again, students who, who pose particular challenges because of their attendance are more highly represented in, in the pool of test takers, yet the scores are going up. So that's, I think, very exciting for us. In spite of those changes in, in the challenges that the, our, our test takers, our learners are bringing, we've both raised the floor for, in terms of failing and warning scores and we've raised the ceiling in terms of the percentage of youngsters earning proficient and advanced scores. At grade eight alone, we've tripled the percentage of youngsters earning advanced scores in math in a single year. So we're very excited about it. The rest of, the rest of the report are some of the traditional bar charts that you've seen, that's another way of showing the trends and the efforts, the work that's underway to close that gap between the state averages, which are in the next page in the yellow diamonds, and, and Lowell scores. So you can see the trends there. And then the remaining part of the report is, are the details of the report that we get from the state, so much more detail, school by school. So welcome questions or comments from Committee members.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, I have to say, certainly I was struck in going through the materials by a, a number of, of points of good news and that's certainly encouraging. I think what I find particularly compelling really is the, the fact that we can very clearly track that we're closing the gap in terms of performance when we compare ourselves to statewide performance levels. I think we have, you know, and the Commonwealth as a whole certainly has seen incremental change, has seen incremental improvement over the course of these, you know, last four, five years as we've been tracking this. But I also think that to see this year, and to see it across subject area and to see it across different age levels, different grade levels, to really see that performance in Lowell is improving at a greater and a higher rate than it is statewide. And, and that really indicates to me, as a, as a member of the Committee, that the changes we're putting in place are truly aggressive and innovative and they are having the desired impact. That our students, who in many ways are far more challenging and in many ways more needy than a lot of the other districts we get compared to, despite that, we found ways to, to reach our students effectively and be able to improve their performance so that we can see very specifically what's working in terms of their performance and their understanding of the standards that we, that we guide ourselves by. So I think that's really, really encouraging. And I think, you know, overall, as we look at the AYP and to be able to look at, what, 17 schools, I think, 19 schools, that, yeah, 19 of the 23 who had made the AYP for academics, I'm sorry, for English Language Arts, also looking at 17 out of 23 for academic gains in mathematics. Again, it was unheard of in this district. We have talked at great length about underperforming schools, about the impact of that for our students and, and their families. And I think that this is a year when we can really point to some very real success. We all recognize that, you know, one year alone of exceptional performance can very easily become just a blip on the radar screen. It is incumbent upon our entire district to be able to build on these successes. I don't think anyone is saying that we've, we've solved the problem. I don't think anyone is saying that our kids know enough and we can relax. The reality is, is that this just tells us that the hard work we're doing is having an impact and I think really just charges us to, to try harder, work harder because the, our students are up for it and our students are showing the real, the real impact of that. So I think that overall, we got some really encouraging news that we're on the right track. And I think we got some, you know, a, kind of a incentive to continue the, the hard work with, that we're doing because when you can see real results, it certainly drives us all a little bit harder. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, just one thing I'd like to add. I was aware of the jump in the, certainly like the sixth and eighth grade math scores, which I thought was astounding, that we took, you know, 14% more kids, moved them into proficient and advanced while also moving 15% up out of failing. But when you look at the comparison to 2005 and 2007 and see that across the district, we've moved 29% more students into advanced or proficient. I know, I hear a lot from parents that the focus is too much on the struggling students, what are we doing for our high achieving kids? To me, this shows that the efforts we've been doing, and we have put so much effort in math in the last, you know, couple of years in terms of the curriculum and the instruction, that it's really paying off at both ends. We got 29% more students moved into proficient and advanced while 18%, 18% moved up from failing across the district. So it's not just, I mean, the good news on the sixth and eighth grade math scores is great, but overall, we've seen really the top is moving up as well as the bottom. I just, I think it's very encouraging and it's just, I really, I want to say thank you to all the staff, the teachers, everybody who's been working so hard for our students and the students themselves, because I think it is really showing that we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to echo that. I first like to thank the teachers because I think that's where the instruction actually happens. That's the direct correlation of the student and the teacher, making sure that the knowledge is transferred to the student. I, I really believe that, having, you know, a child that's now in the, into the eighth grade, and I think back to when we implemented the new reading series, you know, about six years ago. And it takes time to see, I call it reap the benefits of that reward. And we're seeing it because if you look, those kids are in the sixth or seventh grade roughly now that have had the opportunity to stay with us and take the, that whole reading series and graduate year to year through the series. And you can look at the scores and it's showing that, that that's where we're getting the results. I think that's very important because the sixth grade, or the eighth grade math was unbelievable, but the reading, the state saw a 1% increase, we saw a 5% on ELA. I, I really believe that we're, we're starting to reap those benefits and I think you're starting to see that group of children. It's also very important to see, which I, I, I do enjoy looking at the numbers, is the eighth grade students did very well in ELA and in math. And now those are our freshmen in the freshman academy. So we know we've been struggling with the freshman academy and seeing, you know, not the success we'd like to, so I am going to, I am very interested to see what we get this year for, you know, number of students moving on to the 10th grade with success. I really, you know, I think this is encouraging news. I will, you know, I think we're continuing to head in the right direction. I think we're moving forward and I see as encouragement because I know we've been struggling with the program and providing extra services. And I think as Ms. Dougherty said, I'd like to emphasize, on the math side, we did implement a new math series and it hasn't been quite that long, but we've also have the programs in place to challenge. We have the algebra at the eighth grade. We have over 350 middle school students taking algebra and at the end of the year, they take a test. If they take, pass the test, they actually get credit as a freshman for algebra. I think that's wonderful. And I think the seventh grade has the pre-algebra. So that's another 350 middle school students. So if you look what's out there, we are putting challenges in, you know, for our students that are high learners, we're pushing them as well to make that progress and to continue to boost these scores up as well so that we can see we're heading in the right direction. I agree, this is the tip of the iceberg. I think we're, we're trending in the right direction, but I think the motion we had earlier about the curriculum is timely. I think we need to say, okay, we're going in the right direction. Let's not just sit back and just watch the truck cruise down the highway. Where do we go next? What do we do to continue to make the curriculum challenging for all our students, providing the support help for our underperformers as well as, I call it, the middle of the road students? I, I always believe sometimes we leave those kids behind. There's always seems to be programs in place for our, to challenge our, our high, you know, what we call our gifted and talented learners, but, and there's always programs in place for the, the child that's down the other end. But there's those middle of the road children, I always think we got to start thinking about as well, and challenge them. How do we push them up to the advanced level? What support programs do they need? And I think that might be the next step we got to start looking at so that we're making sure across all levels that every child is being challenged and pushed to the highest level so we can continue to see this trend moving forward. So again, I'd like to thank the Administration. I think we're heading in the right direction. I think we're at the crossroads where we have to now come up with a, a next step. What are we going to do from here to make this continue, see these gains that we've seen over this past year? So I, and I'd again like to thank all the teachers because I think that's where it's really happening and that's where that, the knowledge is being transferred to the students. So I'm, I'm glad to see we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just a question, Mayor, through you to the Superintendent. I'm just looking at the grade 10, 10th mathematics. In 98, it starts at 14 and in 2007, it's at 56. I mean, that's, even the state, if you look at the state 24 up to 68, I mean, I don't know, when we look at these, we look at them year to year. I mean, can you explain that? I mean, it looks kind of pretty good when I look at it, but I must miss, be missing something, or maybe it is really good.
No, I think, I think that the scores at, at the high school level statewide and, and here in Lowell have gone at just, you know, the, the right trajectory. I think that all the high schools, the scores for high schools in the Commonwealth, however, are a little bit skewed because before the class of 2003, the test didn't count at all. And the students most likely not to put their all into that test before 2003 were high school sophomores. So throughout the state, there was this sort of deflate, you know, lower number of percent of kids passing or score, or, or scoring. And then when it counted, there was this big boost. Whereas, you know, the typical elementary youngster, typical middle school youngster, you know, you put a test in front of them and they do it. And they, and so the scores, you don't see that bump for the elementary, middle school scores statewide that you, that you saw. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, no, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, you still see a pretty good jump if you're looking at '04, 34 to 56. So I mean, it's, it's, that within itself, I guess when you look at it year to year, I think it's a poor way of looking at it. You really got to look at it over time.
Exactly.
And a lot of us, sometimes we miss that point.
Exactly. And I, I think the very targeted, again, statewide and here in Lowell, the very targeted support at the high school level has ensured that youngsters are taking, for many youngsters, for example, most at risk of failing the MCAS at the high school are taking two periods of mathematics. This Committee has taken a very important step in supporting the graduation requirement of including geometry now. Because our own studies had shown that if, if a youngster hadn't taken, wasn't taking geometry, by the time they took the MCAS, they had almost no chance of passing. They had to have that MCAS, that, that geometry exposure. So the very targeted work, both in, in English Language Arts and in, and in mathematics for freshman and sophomore year has been really critical for, for that. I want to also, if I could just comment, I appreciate Committee members thanking the administrators and staff, but I think it would be remiss if we didn't thank the Committee for being so resolute about ensuring that we got the resources we needed to, to purchase brand-new mathematic programs for the elementary and middle school so that we could really launch it in a very systematic way at the elementary and middle schools several years ago, for really encouraging a very close look at, at struggling readers, to ensure that there's a targeted intervention program for struggling readers at the elementary, middle school level and at the high school, to launch the remedial reading program that I know several Committee members were, you know, very major advocates for, as well as the, the math seminar, what started as the math seminar program for seventh and eighth graders with the push in algebra, which came from this Committee and which our principals and teachers have embraced to include now math intervention for every middle school student. And the intervention is for, for youngsters who are struggling, it's remediation to get them up toward grade level, for the youngsters who are already very strong math students, it accelerates them into algebra and, and pre-algebra, and for the youngsters in the middle, the ones that Committee Member McHugh was mentioning, the youngsters in the middle, there's a targeted mathematics reinforcement for them. And I think all of these, you know, we're still in the early stages of our intervention program that's been so well-supported by the Committee and I think we're going to reap a lot of rewards for that as we get better and better at that. And then, and then finally, the, the support the Committee has given for, for our math, our district math specialists and our math resource teachers, which are really critical positions to support teachers, to, to develop the knowledge in mathematics and the, and the teaching skills, the, the even stronger teaching skills that are particular for mathematics that are critical for us to make, make improvement there. So I do want to thank the Committee for its very strong support and leadership in the mathematics and English Language Arts initiatives.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to accept the report placed on file by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fatakanti. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, Madam Superintendent, UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College Summit.
Yes, we were able to identify a date. This is, this is in response to the school Committee's motion to have a, in effect, a summit involving the Lowell Public Schools, Middlesex Community College, and UMass Lowell to Middlesex Community College, and UMass Lowell to look at our partnership activities and to look to refocus and expand our partnership work. I've met with Acting Provost Pearson and Dean of the Middlesex Campus here in Lowell, Molly Sheehy, to do some planning. This is the preliminary agenda for the morning. It'll be November 14th, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We've been able to identify the availability of the chancellor, President Cowan, the Lowell delegation, and this is the preliminary agenda plan. Our plan is to focus the partnership discussions around the overall theme for all of, all three institutions of college readiness, college access, and ultimately, college success. Because at every step of the way in the pipeline, from preschool to grade 12, there's a challenge of making sure we get every kid through the pipeline and ready for college and able, if that's what they choose to do, able to attend college. And then the community college faces the issue of, once youngsters are there, how to make sure they get through. And their attrition rate is higher than they would like it to be, just as ours is, and the same thing at the university. So focusing on this idea of every student, every day, college-ready, college-bound will be the theme of the summit. And at perhaps at the next school committee meeting, the committee could identify the two people who will be, the two committee members who will join two people from UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, et cetera, in the one-hour discussion in the middle of this three-hour period. So I'll bring this back for the next school committee for action for, so that the committee could name its representatives.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for the report. But also, I want to make one comment. We always talk about ready for college, but I'm glad that you said college success because that's very important also. And sometimes we tend to forget that. We get these young people ready for college, but we want to make sure that they're successful when they are in college. So.
Yes. And that's a, that's a major concern of at Middlesex and UMass Lowell. It's statewide that the attrition rate is too high. And what is it that we could be doing differently? And how could they help us do it differently for our youngsters as they get ready for college? What do we need to be doing with the middle school age students? And how can they support us to do that so that youngsters have a realistic picture and build their, the skills, the confidence, and the attitudes that are needed to be successful? And what can we teach Middlesex and UMass Lowell about environments that are likely to be, in which youngsters are going to be more successful in higher education? So the issues that you've been raising about are youngsters really ready and do they succeed are going to be the topics of this summit. So I hope this is responsive to what the committee is seeking in this, in this summit meeting.
Thank you. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next report on the Mary Badjikalupo Forum.
Yes, I think this came in your Friday packet inadvertently instead of here. But this is just a reminder that the Second Annual Mary Badjikalupo Educational Forum will take place at the Stocklosa School on Saturday, October 27th, from 8:00 AM to noon. The keynote speaker this year will be Dr. Joyce Epstein. And Dr. Epstein is a nationally-recognized expert on the challenges of community and parent partnerships with schools. She's made a, her career has been studying what are the obstacles and what are the ways to overcome those obstacles for stronger parent-school partnerships and stronger community-school partnerships. So we're really looking forward to having a nationally-recognized expert be the keynote speaker and then follow-up discussion by action groups to say, to just look at more. So what does this mean for us? And how do we deepen some of those partnerships?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, we have a report on the results of personnel screening panels. Madam Superintendent.
I think we have the science curriculum renewal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, science curriculum first.
Thanks. The next report is the science renewal. And you have a brief report prepared by Deputy Superintendent Franco outlining some of the really good work that's going on here to continue to upgrade and improve our science curriculum at the middle school level, which can be a neglected area. You know, with the emphasis on mathematics and English Language Arts that we've taken as a school system, the attention to science can dwindle. And fortunately, we have some very strong teachers and some strong leadership in Ms. Franco's office to really make sure that doesn't happen here. And Martha Kohn, who we honored earlier, has been one of the real leaders of that effort, along with Stephanie Clark from the Bartlett, Priscilla Blank from the Stocklosa, Marcia Downey from the Daly, Kelly Hoey from the Robinson, Brenda Busta from the Rogers, Jenny Murphy from the Sullivan, and Daryl Dorian from the Sullivan, Joe Salerno from the Pine Arts, and Patty Adams from the Butler Middle School constitute our science curriculum committee. And they've done some wonderful work in looking ahead to changes that are going to come at the high school because of the changes in MCAS testing and to do the kind of work in realigning and identifying really strong teaching and learning materials that can be used in adjusted grades, to adjust the grade level curriculum at the middle school. So that, and there's been considerable conversation between middle school teachers and teachers in the freshman academy to make a better articulation, which has been one of the areas that we've not been strong enough at. So better articulation between our middle school program and our eighth grade program. So I'd welcome any questions or comments about that.
Thank you.
We'll approve.
Motion to approve the report by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, results of personnel screening panels. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, you received a report this evening. I apologize, it was asked for at the last school committee meeting. It turned out to be considerably more complex to find all of the files in the basement of all of the searches that had taken place since 2000 because it turns out there had been 48 searches since 2000 for principal, assistant principals. So gathering this information. So we're able to, I hope it's responsive, but I recognize the committee is just getting it tonight. Committee may want to refer to the Personnel Subcommittee for more discussion, but I'd like to, I'd like to describe what's here and then obviously entertain any questions or comments committee members may have. So this is a follow-up report to the report that you received at the last school committee meeting where we were looking at all administrative, at all current administrators who had been hired since 2000. So that report identified that 65% of all the current administrators had been promoted within, from within, and that ranged by type of position. So 100% of the deputy or assistant superintendents have been promoted from within, 67% of the other central office administrators, 45% of principals, 68% of assistant principals, and 65% of high school administrators. And then that report gave information about what percent of the administrators lived in Lowell and how many had been raised in Lowell. The committee then last, at the last meeting, asked for additional information, asking to focus on the results of the Personnel Selection Advisory Committee work in all the searches. So just by way of background, the Personnel Selection Advisory Committees are formed for each search. So this focuses on the process of going from application to interview to selection of the finalists by the Personnel Selection Advisory Committee to appointment by the superintendent. The Personnel Selection Advisory Committees are organized by the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. She identifies a convener for each panel. And the convener in turn coordinates the appointment of members of the Selection Advisory Committee. There's one district administrator who's chosen by the Lowell School Administrators Association, two teachers chosen by the United Teachers of Lowell, two parents, one expert provider, one university or higher education representative, and one community representative. And they are charged with reviewing the applicants, selecting those to be interviewed, and identifying typically three to four finalists. Once the, when the finalists are identified, I typically invite other administrators, principals, assistant principals, central office administrators, to join me in interviews of finalists that have been selected and to seek their insights and advice before making an appointment or deciding to extend a search. The report you have, and maybe the best thing to do is to take you to the raw data that's on, that's on two pages in the middle of the report.
Your Honor, may I? Madam Superintendent, I appreciate this. However, in order for us to have a two-way discussion with you, I think the committee also needs to digest this.
Yes.
I mean, you did admit, you just gave it to us tonight. And I am, since I am the person who requested this, I would like to have an intelligent conversation with you about it. I can't because I just got this when I sat down. So how about if we hold this over to the next meeting so that the committee can read it, understand it, and there are things here that I might need to question you about. I'll email you so that the rest of the committee can get the information. But I think that we need, as a committee, to look at this and then at the next meeting, ask, because I can't even ask intelligent questions because I haven't, I'm just getting it tonight.
So is that motion to?
Motion to hold this over to the next meeting, Your Honor.
Delay action until the next meeting.
Delay action.
By Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Any discussion on that motion, Ms. Martin?
I was just gonna ask the question. Do we want to bring it back to the full committee? Or would you prefer to do it in the Personnel Committee and then report out?
Oh, absolutely. Because I'm not a member of the Personnel Selection Committee.
Yes, you are.
So, yeah, that's right, I am.
Yeah, sorry. Don't try and get out of that one.
Yeah, I know. I got out of one tonight. I think that this is an important issue.
Oh, I would agree. I just don't know if we'd prefer to have the conversation there and then be able to report it out. However, you know.
Having it here on the floor is fine with me. Because, because there are, there are, there's information here that I didn't ask, that I didn't get. So I think I need to go back to the superintendent and ask for more information. And because, for instance, the raised, lived-in Lowell status isn't important to me. I believe what we were discussing specifically was up through the system. So I think that there's a lot of questions. And I can't, I mean, since I'm just looking at this now, I can't formulate the questions intelligently. And it's unfair for this committee to actually even be looking at it until we've been able to digest it. We never sit and have a long discussion about something that we've not digested yet.
I understand. I do think the raised, lived-in Lowell was a summary of the report previously given. I don't think there's any
Right.
New, and I, so. But I don't, is there any objection to holding this over by anybody? Okay, so that was a motion made by Ms. Fatacante and seconded by Mr. McHugh, I believe. Any further discussion on that motion, Ms. Doherty?
I don't have any problem with holding it over. I think that's a good idea. I'm just wondering if we could still have the superintendent go over the points we should be looking at? Or does that not seem valuable so that we can, I don't know.
And she'll tell me what points she thinks are important are different than my points.
But in terms of how we read it and what we get from it, sometimes the question can be answered by her explanation of what the information is. That's my, I mean, I know people, it's hot here and maybe people don't want to stay to hear that. But she was just giving us a brief overview of how the report was put together. I don't think that precludes us from taking it home, looking at it more closely, thinking about it on our own, and then coming back with questions. That's just my point.
All right. Well, the motion is to delay action, which I think would include accepting the report or, I mean, so I, what's the wish of the maker of the motion? Do you want to just truncate discussion tonight?
Concern is that not even being able to follow the superintendent because I don't know what's in here yet. So I can't disagree with her or agree with her because I have no idea what this report says. So while I respect my colleague wanting to hear the superintendent discuss this, I cannot have a discussion, and that's not fair to the members of this body. That's absolutely not fair.
Okay. Roll call on the motion. Is there any request for a roll call? Madam Superintendent?
I just wanted to comment that I was not, assuming that you'd want discussion elsewhere. I didn't know if it would be helpful to know what, to just review what was in the report. And if committee members think that's, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to delay action, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So we'll move to the next report, which is the Motorola International Day of Service. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Motorola, our newest, I think, major, major company in the city, has an annual global day of service. And they held that day on Wednesday, and that should say October 10th. They've held that day and carried out these projects on behalf of the schools. So we had members of the Motorola staff working first on some school beautification projects, and then also engineers from Motorola spoke at the high school and several of our middle schools, organized by several of our science teachers. And we want to thank the employees of Motorola for this sign of community engagement.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just to comment quickly, I mean, I really, I certainly agree with what the superintendent said. For a company that's really just established itself as a presence here in the city, it's great to see this kind of, this kind of engagement so quickly with our public schools. Having looked at some of the projects that they had completed, I have to say that the technical writing session on how to make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, I just found so charming. And I think that you can really see how that kind of a classroom activity would really drive home the point of the differences between technical writing and creative writing and the different skill sets that are necessary. So I was really impressed, not only with, you know, certainly the willingness of a company to get involved, but also with their real, I think they were very thoughtful in the way they created these classroom experiences so that our students really benefited from them. So I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. One comment was, if I could request through you to Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Lang, I didn't see the Moody School on here. So maybe we could get their entranceway painted up if we could. And then, second of all, did this, do we know about this? I just want, I might have missed it. I just didn't know if we had prior notification.
I don't know that we did. We got it organized fairly shortly before October 10th.
So everybody was quarried, right?
Hmm?
Everybody was quarried?
I, I don't actually, I can't guarantee that at this moment. They were certainly supervised. They were supervised the entire time.
Through your honor to the superintendent. The reason why sometimes things come before this committee first is so that we can ask questions, as in the previous issue. And the question I have, now, I have the utmost respect for the company, but we have a policy, a strict policy regarding the safety of our children. And that is, if you're delivering milk, or if you're gonna explain how to create a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, you have to get a quarry. And if, I want to find out tomorrow in an email from you whether these people were quarried. Because if they weren't, then somebody broke our policy. And that's a problem. I appreciate these people coming in. And it's not their fault. It's our fault because we didn't do our job. Thank you.
Just my one thing too, that's a good point. But my thing was just if we had prior notice, maybe we could have tried to attend too. So that's all. Thank you.
If I could just add, Motorola, we had the opening of their facility last week, and they had very complimentary things to say about Lowell. And part of their reason for locating here is the availability of talent and mostly science and engineering talent. So I think the prior report about developing the science curriculum is most appropriate if we're going to continue to attract companies like this. Motion to accept the report by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, Madam Superintendent, breakfast at the Lincoln School.
Yes, this is a notification that we received that the Lincoln School has become one of the Lowell schools that achieved the recognition for participation in its universal breakfast program. It's now serving over 80% of the students. And that's the threshold at which Project Bread awards a school $1,000 in recognition of that accomplishment that the school then can use to support teaching and learning. This is exciting. We know that, we know that when youngsters, large percentages of youngsters participate in the breakfast program, we know that that translates into school readiness for the youngsters and better school performance. And I want to applaud the Lincoln School and its staff for developing creative ways of engaging youngsters and their, and their parents in getting their kids to school. of engaging youngsters and their, and their parents in, in getting their kids to school wanting to eat the breakfasts and willing to eat the breakfasts, and integrating that into the early morning activities at the school. So, my congratulations to the Lincoln Elementary School.
Mr. Leahy?
I just want to pass on my congratulations to being, having been at the school to see how this program works, and what a great job they do at the Lincoln School with this. So, congratulations to them.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, I too would like to congratulate the staff of the Lincoln School and Ms. Stunning, the principal, as well, for a job well done. I know they also integrate exercise as part of this. They utilize the gym and have the students walking around, so it's not that they're just getting fed, they're actually getting exercises part of this. So, I think that they have some great initiatives over there. They're really trying to get the involvement of everybody, and as you can see, it's paying off. We're getting a huge participation in the breakfast program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, did you have something? Okay, motion to accept the report by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, on the Patacaville Memorial Elementary School, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, you have a report prepared by Assistant Superintendent Lang about some testing that's recently been completed at the Patacaville on air quality. The findings that there are no significant problems identified. The Department of Public Works, Director of Health Frank Singleton, and, and others are working on this issue. A meeting was held la, I believe it was the last evening at the Patacaville. I was not able to be there, but I understand that parents were invited and staff were invited for a, for a follow-up meeting with Health Director Singleton, with staff from the Department of Public Works, our own staff, about the cleaning measures, the extra diligence around cleaning measures that are in place, the recommendations made to maintain, maintain the best conditions we can there, as well as the Department of Public Works' commitment to try to get to the bottom of the ongoing problems with the heating ventilation system at the school. We've had trouble from the start with the heating ventilation system at the school, and so there's uneven heating in different parts of the, parts of the school. We want to get to the bottom of it. We think, you know, it maybe have contributed to the mold that was discovered. Fortunately, the, the, what was found inside the building is consistent with what was found outside the building, which is the standard that's used to determine whether a real problem exists. But I'd welcome questions or comments from committee members on this.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually attended this meeting last night, and Jay Lang was there, Assistant Superintendent Lang was there, and T.J. McCarthy from the city side, as well as a, a very, you know, intelligent and articulate staff from DPW. Mr. Singleton was there from the Health Department. I think he tried to explain exactly what the test results show. I think the issue that he left us with was something that I want us to hope we follow up with and through you, Madam Superintendent, to Mr. Lang, that we actually get the state to come in and take a look at the air testing quality. I know he suggested that we may do that. I may have missed, he may have actually said we're going to do that, but I think as we have done that in other schools like LaShaw, let's see, as a, as another way of measuring this to ensure that it's a, it's a healthy environment, we need to ensure that they show up to this and do this. I think Mr. Lang and Mr. Cassidy was also there as well. They were, they were very, I think, they took the time to talk to the teachers, talk to the parents that were there, and I think there was some instructive comments regarding, you know, quicker cleaning of the air filters, what have you, removing valve filters, and something that Mr. Lang has committed, I know in our discussions that we're going to be doing that, but I think we need to continue to follow up. I'm thankful that we actually had that meeting, and I'm thankful that we had actually an additional meeting with the teachers a couple of days prior to that. I think now we just need to follow up to ensure that this is occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. Madam Superintendent, your statement was that there have been continual problems. Since we don't have the authority, has the city in any way attempted to go back to the vendor? Because I see the report says that there are black particles on the air intakes, they were cleaned, but, you know, once a spore is there, a spore is there, and maybe some replacements need to be take, done instead.
Right. If I could ask Assistant Superintendent Lang to.
Thank you.
Follow up on that.
Thank you. There were actually two different angles we were actually looking at. When the, the staff at the beginning of the school, you raised some concerns about the air quality in the building and the airflow in the building. We went in to do, and we have done this in other schools, some air quality testing to, you know, really alleviate some of their concerns. And it's standard practice, we bring a different contractor in to conduct that testing. And the test results came back, and from a layman's view, the, the air outside of the school, or the air inside the school is always going to be relative to the air outside, because our HVAC systems have air intakes on the outside of the building that actually then pull in whatever the air is in the outside, inside. It either gets heated during the heating season or cooled during the, the cooling season in the summertime. But ultimately, you want to find air in the building that's representative of the air outside the building. So, if you have, and you're always going to have, some type of, it, it stands out in the report as, say, fungal spores or mold spores, things like that, but if they're in the outside element, they're, they're going to be in the inside as well. And what you look for is really to make sure that the, the magnitude inside the building is not greater than what's outside the building. That would really tell you that you have a problem, you have some kind of a water problem in the school. But the results on the interior of the building were, on average, seven to 10 times less than what you would find in the environment outside the building. So, that was actually positive. And we really wanted to let people know that, you know, there, there really is not an issue with the school with molds or fungus or things of that sort. A second issue that was raised that I was looking into is the, just the actual airflow within the building, some balancing between classrooms, regulation of temperature within rooms. You can have some disparity in one room to another room. And actually, over the last two years, both the city's DPW, as well as the school department, we monitor the, the control systems. They take care of all the mechanical systems in the building, but we actually are the ones that regulate the controls of the building. So, their staff has been working with our contractors to really try to work on that regulation. There were a couple of switches that were changed out last year, some mechanical parts that had broken or worn out, they had fixed for us. So, mechanically, the system is actually now functioning pretty much at 100%. And what we're doing is working with the different software and control vendors to work on some of the balancing in the schools so that you don't have a great fluctuation going from room to room, area to area. And that's going to be pretty much ongoing over the course of this, this year, but what we wanted to really do for staff and parents is isolate the two issues. There is really is not a concern with mold or fungus or whatnot, and the issue really is more just the air, and not quality, but just really airflow and circulation and how it works through the, the inner operations of the HVAC system.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. And next is groundbreaking for the Maury School.
Yes, because of the, because of the fact that the Maury School students will be living with and being able to observe and have that opportunity to make the school construction project a part of their ongoing curriculum, we had determined this summer that instead of having a traditional groundbreaking in the summer, literally putting the first shovel in the ground, that we would wait until school started and was in session and have the, have a groundbreaking so that students could participate. And so that the date's now been set for Friday, October 26th. It will be at noon at the Maury School. It will be at noon in order to accommodate as many, the schedules of as many people as possible, members of the committee as possible.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. We have two items under new business. The first is vote of the official delegate for the Mass Association of School Committees.
Alternate, too.
And an alternate.
Okay.
What's, what's the wish of the committee?
I believe Ms. Dougherty is attending, so I will make motion to make her our official delegate.
So, motion to appoint Ms. Dougherty as the delegate by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh.
Roll call.
And what about, do we do separate? What about an alternate?
Use you to accept.
All right, so roll call on that.
Okay. Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Present.
Present, okay. Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Sure, yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved. Now, we need an alternate in case something happens.
Through, Your Honor, is my colleague, Mr. McHugh, perhaps attending? Ms. Martin? Mr. Leary? Mr. Leahy? I am so sure that Ms. Dougherty is going to be there, I don't think we need an alternate. Thank you.
Okay.
Disposal with the vote of the alternate.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we need any formal action, so.
Great.
All right, so that item's concluded. The next is a request for a date change on a liquor license that was approved at the October 3rd meeting. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, the, the date that was on last agenda was inadvertently incorrect, apparently, and so that this is the correct date, November 2nd, 2007. So, we require a vote of the committee to change the date that, in which the committee authorized, authorized the liquor license request to November 2nd, 2007, at 6:00 p.m. at Lowell High School.
Motion to approve, approve the change in date by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Present. I mean, yes, sorry.
Seven yeas, approved.
Totally changing the date. They already got the license.
Seven yeas, the license change is approved. We have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six requests for conferences and conventions.
Can we separate out number five, please?
Your Honor, make a motion to separate number five from the, from the group.
So moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so we'll, we'll entertain number five separately.
Your Honor, a motion to take up all the rest in their entirety, please.
Okay. Was a motion to approve?
Yes.
By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, items one, two, three, four, and six. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, those requests are approved, and motion to approve number five.
Yes, Your Honor.
By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.